Welcome to the Olin Tangi Local Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today's Thursday, August 10th, 2017. It is 6:00 PM. We're in the Olin Tangi Administration Offices, the Berlin Room. With that, Mrs. Hatfield, do you call the roll?
Mrs. Feasel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. Bartz?
Here. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The flag, I think that flag has feet. The flag has feet. It ends up in a different spot.
So before we approve the agenda or get a motion to approve the agenda, we do have an addendum. Specifically, there are human resources items as final staff slots are being filled. So we have a copy of that here. And so I'm going to ask if there's any comments on the agenda. And if none, I appreciate a motion to approve the agenda with the addendums, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
On the Board's Presidents' Report, I just am excited that the new school year is going to start. I'm going to give my time, though, to Dave King tonight because he's going to give just a brief update of some things that came out of our recent Facilities Committee meeting. A couple and a couple of good things about some budgets and things. So Dave, if you want to run up to speed.
Certainly. It was really a very good meeting the other night. Everybody was in attendance. Good conversations. It's clear they're going to be ramping up to their presentation to us on population trends and building needs over a long period of time in November. They are going to be having a meeting on September 6th. It'll be a subcommittee of the group that they've used before and seen people that presented to us last time. They'll meet with Tracy and with Scott and start to talk about particular moving more of a shift to how they presented population trends at our previous time last November. They're going to be looking at 10-year cycles as we traditionally have, but as again they did last time, they're going to look at a much longer time period as well to look for trends. Jeff did a really good job of going through currently owned properties and what buildings they would support, like an elementary, a middle, whatever. And we went back and forth with Scott's slides. If you remember when we went through redistricting, one of his key slides showed land that is in a position to be developed. And then comparing where we have properties with where we see big growth. Jeff will be asking Scott to combine that into one slide, and it will also have primary roads on that slide, too. So that should be a really strong visual about where are, what do we have for properties? What are we looking at for major growth? Strategic decisions can come out of that. As you, I think, are aware, Jack will become much more involved as we look at the building needs. And then, of course, he gave the group an update on the high school and Shanahan renovation, which are both going really well. Good news is that, as the old saying goes, they're ahead of schedule and their budgets are very much in line. The contingencies are both in great shape. And a subcommittee will also start an investigation of creating security vestibules at our three high schools that is similar in the design to Berlin. So that's, I was really glad to see that moving forward. And it was nice to see Emily in attendance. I think that's a good move for her to be there as they talk about costs.
Absolutely.
Oh, Dave, I have a question. Can you remind me where our land is? I think it's Curve, Bunny Station, and Bean Oiler, but I don't know how much, you know which one?
You know, I'm sorry I didn't bring that with me, but I'll send it to you. So what they support?
Yeah.
Curve can be, I might be wrong, but as I recall, Curve can be middle and elementary.
An elementary.
Of course, you have the, shoot, just lost it. The middle school that's set up to accept a elementary school.
Berkshire, like Berkshire and Hyatt?
Berkshire and Hyatt, both.
Yes. And Bean Oiler is elementary only.
Okay.
And what am I missing?
Bunny Station.
Bunny Station, I think, can support a middle or an elementary.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. Bean Oiler is about 16, 20 acres in that, 20, 20 acres in that range. Curve, the Curve site's at Curve and Sweeney. And then it's approximately between 45 and 50 acres. And same with Bunny Station. So they've been labeled elementary, middle slash middle school, depending on the need.
So that report that they're working on, Dave, is it going to be, like, projected middle school needs for the future?
They'll look at, the primary focus will be an elementary 16.
Okay.
And, but they'll look at the middle school as well, because again, they're going to take it out like 50 years. Understanding the crystal ball is cloudier. But I think that was a very useful discussion when we were talking about this last year.
And how are we trending with our enrollment projections?
I heard kindergarten was higher than anticipated. Yes, no?
Right now, we're sitting about 200, 195 over Future Things enrollment projections. And that's typical. We'll lose some. We've been trying, we've been keeping it real tight, you know, with regards to being resistant in adding staffing. Todd is, I've asked him to analyze it from the standpoint of what's it look like from the last five years or so? Future Think, you know, from like five data points. Our projected enrollments versus Future Things from April to May to June, and then that gave us a better gauge of where we maybe needed to pull the trigger. And then we also started looking at it on a building by building basis. So a more stable environment that doesn't have quite as many students who transfer in and out typically, like in Olin Tangi Meadows, is more transient. They lost 50?
Forty-five.
Forty-five students from the, where we were projecting and where they ended up. Another building, spot on, because they're, they just are more stable. So we're tightening up a couple of those processes, and it's helped us with staffing. So obviously, like with adding two third grades here, we waited to the last possible minute to pull the, pull the trigger on that one. So overall, though, we're 195 over right now, but we anticipate it'll be under 100 off projections, which is still less than around a percent, less than a percent.
Could we get a look at that, of the budget for Berlin? Where we are by major category, where we are with contingency, and where we expect that to end?
He presented that, so I'll send it to you, or I'll ask Jeff to.
Yeah. But I assume Emily would be kind of overseeing more of the sources and uses of contingency?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we'll give you that information.
Okay.
He had that for the Shanahan as well.
I see both, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. One thing I forgot to add at the beginning is we do have an executive session tonight, so when we get to that point, we will be going to executive session, and we will only be coming back to adjourn. You're welcome to hang out if you'd like and watch us adjourn. We're always welcome people. So with that, Mr. Rafe?
We'll see if I can take direction. Oh, it worked. Told me what button to push, though. Welcome, welcome, everybody. It's always great to see people in attendance. It seems like we haven't had a meeting in a long time, but. But so we'll start off, as usual, with a couple of good things. We went out, took some pictures of the preschool at Shanahan. So you see outside of our old entrance, we're installing playground equipment, and it's going to be fenced in and a new surface there for the kids. It'll be, I think, a nice contained area for them to, as a playground. Classrooms, you know, old offices. So this is a first-floor office looking north, so it might have been the old HR area or somewhere in there. So, you know, obviously, you see, it's already getting loaded up with, looking very, very much like a preschool classroom. So people are working furiously to just get all the final touches in there and be ready for the arrival. This is our old board office, our Board of Education room. So, you know, again, they're just finishing up some final touches, cleaning, and so if we wanted to go back and have a board meeting on the preschool tricycles, Devin decided to get creative with his pictures and.
Kidding aside, as we, you know, tying it back to our previous conversation, could we get an update on capacity, given that we're now moving preschool space into here, out of the elementaries with the intent of taking pressure off of the elementary specialized learning centers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And that goes, we'll go back to and kind of refresh, Mr. Fetti do that from the standpoint of, if you remember the conversation we had leading into this decision about our overall elementary capacity, where we were, and then, you know, number of classroom spaces we projected that we needed for this year, for next year, because that'll kind of, and where enrollment's trending, because that'll drive us to.
Position bias, time?
Yes.
Right.
For elementary.
Twenty-one, 2021, 21.
Yeah, because it'd be good to know if we're still on track for that, so.
And that's all information we're feeding facilities, so.
Yep.
So a little addition to our state assessment update, as we dug deeper into the data, we have now found that we had 406 students earned a perfect score on at least one subject area. An additional 41 students earned perfect scores on two subject areas, and two students earned perfect scores in three different subjects. So that's just great, a great accomplishment by those students, who are in the process of informing their families, and it's a significant accomplishment. Our curriculum team, Mrs. McMurray and her team organized the annual New Teacher Academy for three days. We welcomed in 100 new teachers for this year participated in the event, and they just do a phenomenal job indoctrinating the new staff into the Olin Tangi culture and how our expectations of our new teachers. So very energizing to see them in action.
What's the net number? So the hundreds do, but some of those are replacements versus two total growth. Do you know what that mix might be roughly?
So we had, defer to.
Forty-six for growth, 54.
Retirement, replacement, resignation.
Some within that, 54 within that hundred are ESC employees, too, so I don't know if it's.
So roughly 55, 45 split between replacements.
And typically, probably the next, obviously, next board meeting, well, Mr. Meyer or the first one in September will do an overall staffing update and give a picture of where we are from the, with respect to what we had budgeted and where we were in that regard. Shared this with you the other day, but it's a tremendous honor. We have the honor to nominate one staff member a year to the Ohio Department of Education to be considered for Teacher of the Year, and this year, John Juravich has advanced through the process. He was recently named for, there are 12 districts in the state, so he is the District Six Teacher of the Year. Of those 12 teachers, five are selected to be finalists for the 2018 Ohio Teacher of the Year, and John is one of those finalists. So if you ever had a chance to be in Liberty Tree, and he's really been, like, if you remember all the artwork in our central office area in the old space, he was really a driver in getting all that in there for us. So he is just a fantastic, fantastic teacher and well-deserving of that honor. We had a number of students submit artwork to the Ohio State Fair Show, and I would say upwards of 30 to 35 received some type of honor. These two Liberty Middle School students, Nick Gratz and Jacob Sunderland, were awarded first place in the award, for the Award of Excellence, and first place by the Ohio Arts Council. The tiger picture on the right was by Jacob Sunderland, and he was actually selected as the overall top middle school student at the state fair. So nice honor for those two kids. Two discussion items on the agenda. Mr. Fetti will come up and present the Continuous Improvement Plan, which is on the agenda for approval, and then Mr. Lamb is here to go over the Delaware Economic, County Economic Development Plan and give an update on where we are with that. A couple of agenda items of note, obviously, the continuous improvement plan that I just mentioned, and we have an MOU on the agenda for approval with Delaware Moral Mental Health Recovery Services. This replaces some previously contracted services that we were using. We were able to enter into a partnership with Delaware Moral Mental Health, so we are getting an increase in the level of service for the same amount of money we were previously spending for similar services. So we feel like we're getting an improvement in our service for the same money, which is always a good thing. And then finally, just a couple important dates. We have the Convocation and Vendor Fair on Tuesday, August 15th. You know, call, we have two sessions, a secondary session first, then the elementary session. We do have 95 vendors at the vendor fair, so that's a great number. Communications Department has done a wonderful job of getting the vendors there for us. They actually donated $50 each to OEF to be a part of the vendor fair, so.
That's a good idea.
That's, it's just nice to see that community engagement. Obviously, the first day of school, we will be welcoming over 20,500, right now, projections are 20,800 students with an additional eventually 450 preschool kids, so we will officially be over 21,000 as a district come this school year. And then our next board meeting is August 22nd. Questions?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafe. Mrs. Hatfield, Treasures Report, please.
Absolutely. We had a meeting actually just this evening to talk with our financial municipal advisors, with our underwriting team, and our bond council to discuss our ratings presentation for the bond refunding that we have proposed this fall. We are going to refund the 2007 series bonds. It's about a $5 million set of funds, a set of bonds, excuse me. That refunding will save us a net present value of over $800,000. So we're moving forward with having the rating presentation preparation. We'll have that call next Tuesday, and then we'll continue through that process to close and get those bonds refunded. We've also had some good news in that as part of our membership with the Ohio GFWA Organization, which is the Government Finance Officers Association for the local chapter, I ran as part of committee or ran to be a part of the Board of Trustees and was elected as such.
Good.
So, so in September, I'll be sworn in for that, the Board of Trustees. So I'm excited to move forward with that and get, dive deeper into that organization and grow with that professional development. In terms of items on the board agenda, we have two items. We have minutes from our June 8th, 22nd, and July 6th meetings, and then we also have some donations we would like to approve. We would like to thank Monica Roden for her donation of student workbooks for the iReady program at Oak Creek Elementary. We would like to thank Johnny Cake Elementary PTO for a purchase of Cuomo Quest Pro boards, which are an electronic whiteboard totaling over $12,000. And we would like to thank the Olin Tangi Liberty Athletic Boosters for making donations for assistant, additional assistant field hockey coach and girls assistant soccer coach, a half-time person for that, those totaling over $5,000. So we thank all of our community members who continue to give not only monetarily but of their time, and we're excited to move forward into the new school year. Are there any questions that you have for me?
I have a question.
Excuse me.
Has the county auditor said anything about the reappraisals?
In terms of like percentage growth?
Yeah.
Um, you know, we discussed that when we went through the five-year forecast. They had initially gave us, given us an estimate of about 10% or a little higher, meaning a double-digit growth. Historically, we felt 6% was, is where we've been trending. That's what we've put in the forecast for May, because we went back and looked at the trends from the economic downturn in 2008 when we lost valuation. We saw small growth of 2% over the next couple of years, and then it's just 4%, 6%. So we, we kept it relatively small at 6, I think, or reasonable. And we'll continue to reach out and have further conversations to see if they have any change in that as we get into the five-year forecasting.
Because Franklin County, he's been pretty vocal about the increases, so I just wondered if Delaware County was.
I don't believe that they've released any information on it, but we'll continue to walk through that.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hatfield.
You're welcome.
Any public comments for Session 1?
No, there are none.
With that, we'll go into discussion items, and welcome Mr. Fetti, who's going to talk about the CIP.
Good evening. I am presenting the 1718 Continuous Improvement Plan for your approval tonight. There's only one change from last year's plan in Benchmark 5, increasing from 90% to 100%, the indicator that says we will increase or maintain 100% of juniors and seniors participating in advanced placement courses, college credit plus courses, mentorship, global scholars, or industry certification programs, and/or earning an Ohio Honors Diploma and/or earning a remediation score on all areas of the ACT or SAT. All of those measures are deemed to be measures of career and/or college readiness, something beyond the high school diploma, an indicator of success beyond the high school diploma. So we changed some of that language a couple of years ago, and we have been slowly increasing it to our goal this year of 100%, that we want all of our graduates to achieve one of those, one of those indicators, if not more than one. So that is the only change from last year. Otherwise, you might recall, we went through over the past couple of years a pretty substantial revision process of this document, so we're pretty happy with where it stands otherwise. And I'll remind you that this is the document we use to measure the success of our buildings, and every year we create an annual report based on the district's performance against all of these benchmarks and indicators, as well as each building's performance against these benchmarks and indicators. All of our buildings will create building continuous improvement plans this year, as they do every year, to plan how they will meet these goals, and this will also dovetail nicely with the strategic plan, which we will be presenting to you soon. Julie.
Last year, growth was the thorn in our side. Have you gotten from the preliminary results any growth measures?
No, even preliminary growth data has been released from the state yet. It's usually the last to come out. I would expect to see it hopefully by the end of August, but maybe even just early September, a couple of weeks before the report card itself. So no idea where we're at with growth. We have, we have lots of other preliminary data, and it all looks good. We thought last year's growth measures were kind of a mystery, so we're hopeful that it won't happen twice, but we don't know yet.
On that preliminary data, now that the teachers and the principals are preparing for this coming school year, do they have that so that they can prepare, or what, I mean, or is it too preliminary?
They have the preliminary data that we have. Anything that's available, we share it with the principals so that it can inform their planning, but they also know that it is not final yet. So they don't necessarily overreact to all of it, but we know which, which data typically stays consistent from when it's first released to when it's finalized, and which data fluctuates a lot. We're pretty good at projecting all that data now, so most of it we're fairly confident in, so they're using it as best they can. We've also, because we have the individual test scores, we've already started to create our individual student projections, which go into that first benchmark. So all the buildings will have their student projections to start the year. They'll have the student watch lists already created, so they've already begun making math groups and reading groups to intervene where necessary.
And then finally, has the state told you when they will be releasing the information, especially to the parents?
In terms of district data?
Yeah. I was just told sometime in September. Have they told?
Yeah, I've heard roughly mid-September, but I, as far as has the state actually told me directly?
Yeah. Or released anything to you guys to say, watch, this'll come out?
Yeah, not, they have not, but I've been hearing mid-September, so that's what I would expect.
It's not going to be pretty across the state, just in general. I talked to an area superintendent. They increased in every tested subject area, increased their percentage of passing, proficient, advanced, accelerated, and went from meeting 13 indicators to meeting two indicators because this cut score went the.
Similar to what they did with the third-grade reading guarantee, where they increased the cut score every year?
Right.
I have a question, and maybe Julie knows a little bit about this because of the testing conversation. So I received, as a parent, my state testing scores did not help the district at all with my son. And this is what, this is what I find difficult to understand. So my child has dyscalculia, okay? So he is significantly behind in math, but he's being tested at the grade level. So how could he possibly show improvement when he's behind? It's not like they're testing what he actually learned. They're testing what they've determined the seventh-grade curriculum is. So that's my question. How, how do we show growth? Because he's grown in math, but.
I thought that was, that was what it was supposed to catch.
Well, so growth, it should, that should factor in. So it will take his testing history and will project his growth based on how he's done in the past.
Right, and not necessarily.
Me, as far as.
In its entirety. It's for him.
Proficiency is the standard benchmark for everybody across the state.
Does the, does the material change to be seventh-grade level, then eighth-grade level, and so?
Yes, it does.
But he was tested the previous year on a lower level.
Right.
But if he showed growth, that should be reflected. That's what I thought.
They say if this is how you performed on seventh-grade date, test material last year, here's where we expect you will perform on the eighth-grade test material this year.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And then they see where you actually perform. And if you, if you hit that benchmark, you meet growth. That benchmark could be well above proficient, right at proficient, or even below proficient, but you could still meet growth and be below proficient.
So a parent wouldn't know that?
No, no.
The district will get that.
So as far as the district data is concerned, remember, growth is only calculated for, I think it's still subgroups of 30 students or more. So there, in theory, there is individual student growth, but in actuality, there is no individual student growth. I cannot look up your child's growth data and find out, did your child grow or not grow? I can find cohorts within the grade, and I can look at scores, and I can make a determination based on, you know, what I know, but the state does not actually attribute to each individual child an above-growth or a below-growth score. That's an aggregate score for groups of kids. It's all very confusing.
It's a small number, but doesn't even count.
Right. It doesn't give the schools very much data to work with to know if they are actually. I mean, that's why we have our own assessments.
Right.
Because we're not getting it from.
We, remember years ago when we had, we were, participated in the SOAR program through Patel for Kids? The test was consistent from year to year. The growth measures were well-understood. The teachers were trained on how to interpret the reports. We like to think that that was usable growth data. It was also non-evaluative. It didn't have to do with the teacher's evaluation. It was just good information to use to help students. As the test has changed and the way they calculate growth has changed multiple times over the past year, it becomes less meaningful in the classroom, unfortunately. If it ever does stabilize, it is still a good tool, I think, but it has to stabilize.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Fetti? Thank you, Mr. Fetti.
Thank you very much.
Next, the Board's going to welcome Bob Lamb, Delaware County Director of Economic Development, who's going to talk about the Delaware County Economic Development Plan. So welcome, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight, Bob Lamb. I'm the Economic Development Director for the county. I've been with the county for two years, actually, as of yesterday. And so when I first came on, one of the main directions that was asked of me was to put together a plan that would help guide us forward for the next 13 years. And really, what our main goal in my office is, is to bring in new investment, commercial investment, to the county that can help diversify our tax base, provide job opportunities within the county, but most importantly, provide the revenue sources that we need to provide services to the residents within the county. And so I'm going to quickly walk you through what our Economic Development Action Plan is. It's approximately a 13-year plan, and what we will focus on here is really our primary sources of concern for being able to track those investment opportunities, and then do a very quick discussion on the secondary. We'll start off by giving a quick overview of where Delaware County stands today and what are some of the pluses that we have to attract investment to the county, but also some of the challenges that we face. Picture of Delaware County and where it sits within Central Ohio area. And so you can see here the growth that we've experienced as a county. In 1990, we were approximately 67,000 people, and today, we're almost 200,000. We are on track, under the Morpsey numbers, that by 2040, we could hit 350,000. So an additional 150,000 bodies coming to the county. And so how are we going to handle that with infrastructure needs? How are we going to handle it with resource demands? So here you can see where we sit with, in compared to what we consider to be similar like communities within the state of Ohio. And these communities were chosen based upon their demographics, based upon their location to major metropolitan areas, and how we feel that they best were similar, well, I guess I would say, how they were similar to us in multitude of ways. And so we wanted to compare, how do we stand against these types of communities in Ohio? As you can see, median family income, we lead the state at approximately 92,000, significantly over what we consider to be our competitors from a community standpoint. Home ownership rate, again, we're number. Home ownership rate, again, we're number one in the state with almost eighty-two percent of our residents being homeowners, which is really a large benefit for us. It brings ties to the community, it lets us know that we have a length of time to work with residents, and that we are not a transitory community. Education-wise, we're about fifty-one percent of our residents have at least a bachelor's degree. When we actually look at this at the associate level, this number rises to sixty percent. That means we're approximately three times the national average for education within the county. Again, another huge benefit when we go out and try to market to a company why they should make their next investment here. Poverty rate is four-point-eight percent, and this is actually last year's number. We are down currently to three-point-eight as of today, and under the projections, we could hit below three-point-five by the end of the year. Again, though, those are projections, we will see come January where we actually are. Mean commute time is twenty-five-point-seven, and so, you can start seeing where one of the disadvantages is that we face as a community, and that's traffic patterns. If you're trying to get downtown or getting home, you understand what you face, and currently, to give you an idea of what that looks like and how it will play out in the future, our workforce today is approximately a hundred thousand individuals. Eighty percent of that workforce goes south every day to work and comes home northbound at the same time. So, since we are an automobile-based community, that is eighty thousand vehicles that we're putting on the road at the same time in the same direction. With a hundred-and-fifty-thousand new residents coming to the community over the next twenty years, that could increase that number by a minimum of forty, maximum of sixty thousand, and so, that takes that eighty thousand, turns into one-twenty to a hundred-and-forty-thousand vehicles. We don't have a lot of options for putting in new roadways, so it's finding ways to invest in the existing roadways that we have to help minimize that time. We use the mean commute time here because that's the average within the economic development and development world, we use to look at times, but the average time within the county for travel is forty-three minutes each direction. That means that our residents are spending about an hour-plus on the road every day trying to get to and from work. Our concern, obviously, is as traffic increases and length of time to get to work increases, that can have a significant impact on quality of life issues, and as quality of life is affected, so comes the desire to live within your community and reinvest within your community. So, what we wanted to do here was show you what is the value of bringing commercial investment and bringing it down to the individual level, and we feel that what's driving growth predominantly within Delaware County is the amazing school systems that we have here in the community, Olentangie being a leader within that area, and so, we wanted to show, what does our commercial framework look like when looking at other central Ohio communities? And so, you can see here, we selected Dublin, Westerville, Southwestern, New Albany school districts to look at. Total assessed value of land within Olentangie is the highest within that area. That means generating a lot of tax dollars, be able to provide for the services that are needed within it. However, when we switch over to look at how much of that is coming off commercial, we see only three-point-two percent. That means approximately ninety-seven percent of the revenue being derived within the Olentangie school system is coming from single-family homes. That means as service demands increase, the only reliable source for new revenue is the residents within the community. We want to be making smart investments in commercial opportunities so that we can see that shift. We want more commercial to come in to add and diversify that tax base so that we can better be able to provide services without having to go back to residents. So, we really broke Delaware County into three main areas, north, central, and south. With the north area is the least likely to see immediate investment opportunities within. Central is really starting to pick up, and in fact, we just launched a thirty-six, thirty-seven corridor study. Parts of Olentangie school districts are within that study area, and what our main goal there is to look at, what are the development opportunities along thirty-six, thirty-seven? What's market feasible along that area? And then, working with the local communities and landowners to reposition the land in a manner that will make it very attractive to commercial end-users coming in. We know that it's going to grow residentially within that corridor, but we want to make sure that as much land as possible, we're positioning for commercial growth. Our goal is to see land transition from single-family type development to commercial development. We want to make it an easy process and encourage that when and where we can, so that we can see, again, that diversification of our tax base. And then, the southern area, which is where we're seeing the growth right now, where we're having opportunities to secure new commercial investment, and where we're concentrating a lot of resources to try to take care of those opportunities as they come along, because again, we are competing with the rest of central Ohio, but not only just central Ohio, we compete with all of Ohio, as well as the Midwest, and so, we need to be active and engaged with these different developers, different realtors, brokers, in order to attract that next commercial opportunity. So, our major growth corridors, as we see them, are twenty-three, forty-two, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and the seventy-one corridor. I'm sure it's not a surprise to anybody. It's not only our major growth areas, but it's also where we see traffic patterns starting to become longer and a little more challenging to address. So, the goals of our plan, as I mentioned before, is really to create new revenue sources, but also to enhance the quality of life. We are predominantly a residential-based community, we understand that, we want to be very respectful of that fact, and so, as we go to attract new investment, we want to make sure that it's the right kind of investment for the community, that it's in the right location, and that it's really enhancing the overall quality of life for the residents. We're benchmarking our success by saying we're going to establish fifty-six thousand net new jobs by twenty-thirty, increase median family income by a hundred, to a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, and facilitate at a minimum five-hundred-million infrastructure improvements. And so, to quickly walk you through some of what these numbers mean, when I say we want to increase the median family income to a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, when you look at just it growing over time, how it has in the past, that number would only hit about a hundred-and-six-thousand, and so, we're adding approximately ten-thousand to that goal, and what would just naturally occur based upon growth patterns over the last about fifteen years, we removed two thousand eight to two thousand eleven from this range in order to try to give a fair approximation of what that would look like. I might not have minded keeping it in since it brought the number down, but we didn't feel like that was fair. And then, facilitating five-hundred-million infrastructure development. This is roads, this is sewer, this is water, this is fiber, all the things that are critical to be able to attract commercial opportunities, and it is a large number. We are looking at over two-hundred-million in interchange investments just off of seventy-one, over two-hundred-million in other projects from a road transportation standpoint, approximately a hundred-and-thirty-six-million in sanitary sewer. So, the five-hundred-million is really a minimum amount that we're looking to tackle. That number could easily be more in the seven-hundred-million, eight-hundred-million-dollar range. So, it is a large amount of capital that's going to be needed to address the infrastructure needs coming forward over the next fifteen, twenty years. As I mentioned before, what are our challenges? Commute and traffic times, if you're trying to move north or south at certain times, if you're trying to go east to west, at certain times, you know what those challenges are. Water, sewer, and fiber is critical. You cannot land new commercial investment in today's world if you don't have these things, and that includes fiber. If you're not able to meet the technological demands of a company, you will not be able to locate that company. And then, the development process, and this is something that we control wholeheartedly at the county level, and we are actively working to try to improve, and I'll walk you through just a couple of these fairly quickly. So, what this breaks down to, for us, is we're focusing on infrastructure, site development, and tax policy and development process. From an infrastructure standpoint, what can we do to make transportation better? How are we leveraging our new sanitary sewer plan to make sure that we can provide sewer in the key locations where we think growth is going to come, so that we can head off all of the land going residential and be able to position land for commercial? In today's market, you cannot really finance sanitary sewer development off a commercial project, but you can off residential projects, and so, it becomes much easier for a residential developer to come in, pick up a larger area of land, develop the sewer system needed to accommodate their development. A commercial company is just not willing to make that investment in today's market, and so, we're looking at where can we be proactive to make that investment? How can we do it in a responsible manner for the community, but also getting it done so that we can be competitive in landing that commercial deal? And then, fiber optics, again, it's a critical component. We are working right now to hopefully release an RFP before September that will help us put in place a plan that will enhance the fiber system, as well as the wireless cellular service system throughout the county. We want to make sure that we're a premier community, not only today, but also in the future, and cellular service demand, the ability to provide fiber services will be a key issue to that over the next ten to twenty years. One of the ways in which you can see that is you can look at the investments that Union County and Franklin County are making along thirty-three between the Honda plant and Ohio State. Site development, in today's world, you're just not going to land businesses unless you have the sites ready to go. They don't have the time or the desire to wait for you to develop sites, they want sites that are pre-approved, they have everything they need located there, that they know what it is that their investment is going to be needed to get it up and running, and that they can do it within a year. And so, we are working with Jobs Ohio, we're working with Columbus twenty-twenty, as well as local landowners, to get our sites certified as ready, and also to put in place, you can see here, established last mile policies, so that we can have clear financial incentives to take a fiber line, a sewer line, or a water line, from where it may be running down along, say, twenty-three, and into somebody's property, doing it quickly and efficiently so that we can bring that company here. And then, development process, one of the biggest things that kills deals is time, and so, we're looking at how can we get projects done faster, how can we do it more efficiently in an environment where there's a better understanding within the private sector of what they're going to have to go through to successfully be able to get their project from concept to doors open. And so, we have brought in lean and Six Sigma trainers to address the existing policy. We are working on streamlining zoning processes, and we're looking at working with our community partners to put in place incentive policies that are clear-cut, that are easy to maneuver, that we can all agree upon as a community, so that we are not spending three, six, nine months a year negotiating various incentive policies with a private entity. That kind of timeframe can cause you to lose a deal. We want to try to simplify it in a manner that's fair to everybody, and then go forward with being able to advertise that to potential developers, potential investment opportunities that are out there. We would like to establish MOU policies with the school districts, with the local communities, so that we can quickly be able to tackle various items and be able to put deals in front of potential end-users to be able to land them here in our community, so that we can start seeing those tax dollars. Some of our secondary efforts, and though they are secondary, it does not mean that they're not important. We're working on putting together a marketing program, something to launch in twenty-eighteen that will be a combined effort between a multitude of partners, not just the county going out and saying why you should make investments here, but working with both private businesses, private entities to do that, as well as the CVB chambers within the community, and trying to speak with one voice, with one plan, very similar to the endeavors that you've seen undertaken by twenty-twenty Franklin County and Columbus, and trying to speak with one voice. And then, some of the additional items, we're concentrating on workforce development. We all know that you have to have a strong workforce to be able to attract businesses to your area. We're incredibly fortunate, not only for the local schools that we have here in Delaware County, but also having the Ohio States, the Columbus States, OWU, and other key universities within the state located here that we can work with to help make sure we have that educated workforce that businesses are looking for. And then, we are working on an entrepreneurial center in conjunction with several of our partners. We are hoping that we can bring that together and be able to announce that as a successful project over the next few months. And then, business retention and expansion. The county has never launched a full-scale business retention and expansion program. We will be doing so in twenty-eighteen, working with the various communities, targeting over one-hundred businesses, over fourteen different events within twenty-eighteen in which to engage our businesses, and the main issue there is eighty percent of your new jobs are going to come from existing businesses within your community. And so, if you want to grow your tax base, you really need to be engaged with those existing businesses. In order to do that, you need to be in front of them, you need to understand what are red flag issues to them, issues that could cause them to close their doors, or cause them to make that next investment somewhere else and not in your community. And so, we want to be aware of those, we want to make sure that we're addressing those needs as we go forward, and that we are considered a partner, not just a hurdle in their process of making a choice as the right location for an investment. That really sums up the main plan. We are working on several projects that I am hopeful will have an opportunity to be in front of you to further explore. I, in fact, have meetings with some of your staff over the next week or so to discuss those opportunities. We are looking at one industrial project right now that we are hoping to have approval to provide you notice on that incentive package as early as next week. It'd be a hundred-acre expansion of existing industrial park. We are excited about these opportunities, we think they are the right types of investment opportunities for our community, and so, we're looking forward to hopefully being able to bring many more of those types of projects to you over the next few years. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, whether there are items going on in the community, or more general of a nature, or towards the Economic Development Plan that we've established.
General comment, just me personally, all the things you set up there are wonderful, growth, expansion, a lot of the things you set up there put stress on the district because more houses, more developments, not commercial, but more residents mean more stress, and we fund on the back of the taxpayer. So, all I would say to you is, as you look at these things, as you look for MOUs and other ways to work into agreements with us, we're in a unique situation in that we also get very little from the state. So, I don't know if it's the right thing to ask, but politicians love jobs, they love to see businesses built, they love to see money coming into communities. They get tired of Mr. Rafe going down to the State House and saying, "Fair funding, fair funding." So, you're starting off the process with great growth, and I would tell you that puts some stress on us to think about those things. So, whatever influence you have, the ability to help alleviate some of that stress makes it probably more easier for this board and for the administration to think about what these types of investment means, and what type of MOUs and types of programs and plans you want to put in place. So, it's just a general comment for you. I'm sure you're well-aware of our situation. If not, consider this your reminder of our situation. I don't know if any of the other people on the board want to expound on that any further.
Really, I'd add is, you know, we, as a board, we should really get behind and support commercial development, because that's a real struggle.
Absolutely.
The struggle is that proper mix between residential and commercial. Residential's going to happen, and we almost need to...
Hundred percent.
...really support and facilitate the commercial development. We've been talking about that for ten years. That's, that could really help take some of that burden off of that residential taxpayer, is to get some good, robust commercial development in twenty-three corridor and thirty-six, thirty-seven corridor for us.
Sol Mill Parkley.
Yeah, and the loss of the Amazon is still raw for me.
Yeah. Because of the town, and that was an Orange Township thing, it wasn't a Olentangie local school thing.
I think it was a time issue.
It was definitely a time issue.
You pointed out, one of the biggest obstacles is the length of time it takes to get a deal done. If you're negotiating with two school districts, three townships, there's got to be a way to streamline that process.
And an organization that doesn't, that's risk, conflict diverse.
Yeah.
And Amazon doesn't want conflict, but, so, I agree with you a hundred percent. That's really, would be the biggest help for us.
And to that point, you know, what can we do as a board, because we do have those groups who are not in my backyard?
Yeah.
And I don't know that they realize, well, if it is in their backyard, then that is better for the entire community. You know, if we can help you in any way, we are willing to help you do that.
That's great to hear.
If you need us to meet with, you know, township trustees, or city of Powell, or whatever, because I, we've, you know, I was looking at people running for Powell City Council, there are some of those not-in-my-backyard people that are running for city council.
Yeah.
So, if there's anything we can do to help, but then, I do have a question. Have you identified types of industries that you believe that would fit well here? That's my first question. And two, what is your working relationship with Jobs Ohio?
First off, let me say, I agree with the statements that you made. It is a huge concern bringing new investment, especially if that investment's going to be residential-based and not commercial. We know the growth is coming. Our main goal is to try to transition that land from a residential zoning or purpose into a commercial purpose to minimize that impact overall. I think the MOUs are a great tool to do that, they can help get that speed and efficiency. We are working with the various school districts within the county to develop some educational materials that I think could be helpful in going out to the public and letting them understand better what TIFs are, what are incentives, because I think it can really get complicated very quickly with those types of incentive policies. We want to make it simple so that they can understand, we're trying to make smart investments for the future. To your question of what are our target industries, we're looking at logistics, manufacturing, medical, professional office as our major... medical, professional office as our major focus going forward. We believe that we can be competitive within logistics and manufacturing because of our location in central Ohio and the proximity to the rest of the US population in under eight hours. And so you are seeing those investments happen within central Ohio. We believe if we have the sites and we have the systems in place, we can land those investments as well. And then because of the education base that we have as a community, we see a strong niche within the professional service, IT, engineering, law, finance fields that can make us competitive. And then again, with a growing population, medical is an area in which we can secure new investment opportunities, and many medical office buildings or facilities do carry a large tax dollar base from a property standpoint with them, so they are a good thing for us to be out there trying to engage. On our relationship with Jobs Ohio, we have a very good relationship with Jobs Ohio. We are working right now to try to get some of our sites, one main site, through the site approval process, and so we're looking to grow that obviously. We never want to say we have a relationship that we're happy with with Jobs Ohio because we always want to be in front of them more and engaged with them more.
I have a question about population. At a recent meeting of the Olentangie Rotary Club, there was a county commissioner, and he said the population projection for 2050 for the county is an additional 160,000 people. And I noticed your slide there earlier. Well, at a previous Rotary meeting sometime before that, Morpsey projections in sight, in sight 2050, they said they were projecting a plus 60,000. So I'm wondering if you can rectify that difference? Can you speak to that?
I'm happy to go pull those items and take a look and see where the discrepancy is. My understanding is this 350 number is from the Morpsey numbers, so I'm happy to look into that and get back to you on that item.
One last question on the infrastructure. You mentioned the Delaware County engineer that's working, that you're working with them. And are you or is the Delaware County engineer also mirroring or managing ODOT infrastructure projects as part of that as well? Because, because sometimes their, their projects are based on traffic patterns and need more so than economic development. They'll take that into consideration as part of a project, but it's not their primary goal for infrastructure on roadways. Sewers and other things, that's not their business, but on the roadway side, are you guys partnering with them?
Yes, we work very closely with ODOT. We've had a great relationship with them over the years. That can be seen out by the Tanger Outlet Mall where we were able to facilitate a deal on getting some improvements done in a manner that ODOT normally would not have signed off on. So I do think we have an excellent working relationship with them. There are times where what our priorities are may not perfectly align with theirs, and we try to navigate those paths as best we can. ODOT's a large entity. They have a lot of pressing matters that they have to undertake. We don't always rise to the top of that list, and that's understandable, but we do try to leverage their dollars when and where we can so that we're offsetting the cost for the community.
Because they do filter down dollars on small projects, smaller projects that they don't want to manage, the county.
And they do have funding for economic development purposes. A lot of those are tied to logistics, so as we get the ability to secure logistics opportunities, we do plan on going to them to ask for assistance.
Okay, great.
Maybe the last comment would be, if you'd be willing to spend time with our Facilities Committee, in particular, as we're rolling out these 10-year forecasts, making assumptions on lean conversion, does it convert to residential, does it convert to commercial? Kind of getting your input and perspective on where you may be targeting conversion to commercial versus commercial to residential. So that our assumptions are kind of aligned with maybe what the county's thinking and economic developments think.
Yes, more than happy to come to any meetings or provide any materials or work with your staff as you so desire.
Well, because most of that commercial growth is going to be on our northern border right now, right? On the 36-37 corridor? Because the 71 is really going to be just the two new projected exits to residential.
Well, then the economic to go around the exits.
Well, that's it, but some of them are so close to residential, there won't be, probably be very little.
But then, but then I was going to say, we've got some prime 23 spots where that
Amazon was going to go.
Right, still.
You know, that's, it's still there, but it could flip back to residential.
And then cross feed on Mount Carmel side as well.
Yeah, Mount Carmel side.
And there's still a couple hundred acres there. Yeah, I agree, I think that's a great, that's a great discussion. I'm sorry?
Poldy owns that site now.
Poldy has a contract, I believe.
On the, on the Amazon side?
The Amazon side or the Mount Carmel side?
Amazon side, no, Home Roads, Home in 23, west of 23.
Well, that's going to be quite a buffer.
Well, perhaps you could check your calendar. I will ask Jeff Gordon, our Facilities Director here, to contact you about the Facilities Committee. And as I mentioned earlier, you caught their subcommittee that's going to be starting to look at projections, population, beginning September 6.
September 6, okay. I'll put it in my calendar.
Maybe that's a possibility.
And then the one thing I would like to add, you were talking about the interchanges, the big Walnut interchange that's being forecasted, it's approximately $40 million, and that will be mostly a residential interchange. The big key for us from an economic development standpoint, and why it's actually a huge priority from an economic development standpoint, is it will help alleviate traffic at Polaris. Right now, if you go past the Polaris and Gemini exits, you have to go up to 36-37. That's approximately 10 miles. This will be four miles north of Gemini and allow for residents who are trying to travel within that area a different off ramp for them than Polaris, and so we can help make Polaris a more commercial-based interchange and not a residential and a commercial interchange.
That project is still quite a ways out, is it not? Because of the inability to get some of the land?
We have worked with the Army Corps of Engineers to address some of those issues. I believe we have a plan in place to do that. I can't tell you when we're hoping to break ground. I can tell you the county engineer has expressed his desire to get the project moving.
Because some of it is state park land, is it not, on the one side?
Yes, and wetland area that has to be offset, so, but it's my understanding, we've laid out the, an approved plan through the Army Corps of Engineer, which has been the main item we've been trying to work with them to tackle.
Okay.
Great presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb, appreciate that. Mrs. Hatfield, any participation for session two?
No.
Okay, with that, would you present, please, the treasure action items?
Of course. I'd like to present treasure action items A and B for approval, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes. I believe the rest of the items are superintendent action items, including the addendum items. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So could you present those, Mr. Rafe?
Present superintendent action items A through F as amended.
All moved.
Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes. So with that, we're going to move into executive session with a reminder that our next meeting is on the 22nd of August, which is a Tuesday due to some scheduling conflicts with myself being one of them. But we're going to, it is a good scheduling conflict. Thank you, that's all about me. So we're going to go into executive session as permitted by section 121.22 G1 of the Ohio Revise Code to consider the employment of public employees. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes, and as a reminder, we will only come back to the boardroom to adjourn. So for all of you who came tonight, thank you for coming. Be safe on your way home.